Call to order, the December 7th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Agency and Financing Authority. We are going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by Mr. Michael Bissette. The council did meet in closed session this evening to discuss evaluation of the city manager. No action was taken. It brings us to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city council. This is a time in our agenda for members of the public to address the council on items that are within the council's jurisdiction but not on our agenda. We are prohibited by state law from taking up these items at the council itself, but it does provide an important opportunity for public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address this or any other item on our agenda this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart that indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We do recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can present some anxiety, so we do ask that there not be any boos, or cat calls, or applause, or cheers, or other demonstrations in that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. We take the yellow cards up until the conclusion of the staff report on each item, and following -- once the council discussion and the public comment have begun, we don't take any additional cards. So if you wish to provide testimony on any item, please fill out the card as soon as you can. With that, we have one request under item 1A, and it's by Mr. Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Willie Lowell of West Sacramento, for the record. And Monday, I was doing what I do. Half the time, I caught the bus over on 15th Street across from the fire station, as opposed to West Acre Road across from the church, and I kept noticing that that little yellow sign, that this is a safe drop-off station, was no longer in the front, on the 15th Street side, but had been moved around to the Alabama Street side. And the thought occurred to me, well, for those that aren't aware of that rule, or whatever, suppose they're coming, going westbound on 15th Street. They're not going to see that sign around the corner on Alabama Street. And so I think we ought to leave the sign there that's been moved around to Alabama Street, but supplement it with a second sign on 15th Street, but then below that, we should have a little arrow sign that goes down and then around the corner, so to speak. And we should also consider what they have over in the city of Davis on 5th Street and Russell Boulevard, on both sides of that fire station. They have these big signs indicating that a fire station is right up front, and I guess there's some kind of a message there to slow down and yield to the fire trucks and so forth, because too often, I see traffic coming down 15th Street, and instead of 25 miles an hour, a lot of times, they're doing like 40 miles an hour. And I think they should slow down a little bit of anything, rather than speed up, but and then depending on how you feel about that, we may want to take similar actions close to our other fire stations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. All right, that's only a request we have under item 1A, so we're going to proceed to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation met on November 17th. The three significant items where we approved, the budgets for all but three of the properties. All the properties are in positive cash flow. We were also notified that the Housing Development Corporation was awarded 3.2 million in credits, in tax credits, and those are basically used to finance affordable housing projects. The market value of those is about 90-95 percent, which means that after shopping for buyers and lenders, it's approximately $2.9 million rehabilitation costs that the housing corporation will have available. And lastly, the Housing Development Corporation applied for a MASH grant, which is the Multi-Family Affordable Housing Solar Housing Program. It's a California funds, and basically, it's to help introduce solar into affordable housing projects. Our calculations are that this would save, result in about $100,000 annual savings to the properties. Basically, what happens is contractors will come in, and they'll pay for the installation of the solar on the projects, and then the organization will enter a power purchase agreement to actually pay for the cost. So when all is said and done, it results in a significant savings, utility savings. The Tenure Homeless Plan Commission met on November 17th, and the most significant item there is, there has been a, basically, a problem getting a quorum at the meetings, and the inability of the commission to really move forward. Staff have been great throughout the county to provide the reports on what's happening in the county, but because of the lack of the ability to get a consensus, and the feeling that the commissioners were burdened with too much work rather than being more than an advisory goal, the commission voted to do a reorganization that's basically going to mirror what's going on with YOLO Housing right now. My understanding is that at the city manager level, there's a discussion of making an action commission that would include council members, and I think residents as well. And this commission would then basically fold into that same structure. And what it would do is basically put a lot of the work back where it should be, which is on HPAK, which is the Housing Poverty Action Coalition, members who would report to the commission, similar to what happens at city council when staff prepare reports. And the commission has actually more in a policy role than actually implementation role. So that is the feeling, and there was a unanimous decision to do that. We're in the process now of creating bylaws, basically, to structure this for January. So hopefully, that's going to help better coordinate homeless services in YOLO County.
Can I ask, Mr. Johansson, are they borrowing the model of the YOLO County Housing Authority Board, or would they actually be borrowing that, using that actual agency board?
My understanding is that the, and I spoke with Louise a little bit this afternoon about that, and it's still in the formulations stage, but for example, there would be political leaders on the homeless commission, as there are now, and those same leaders would be on the housing board, which in the homeless meeting would meet right after the housing board, similar to redevelopment agency and city council. And the YOLO Housing would be responsible for the management of the agendas of a tenure plan. It's basically to get permanent staffing on both of those items and to collapse it down. Housing was already doing a lot of the work anyway, so the feeling is that they're doing work on the housing board. And my understanding is the supervisors are still going to be policy, but the actual action is going to be done by this action board. Maybe the city manager has some more information on that, but I think it's still at a staff level discussion at this point. But the composition of the tenure plan commission after this would be three elected members and one alternate. The members would be from Davis, West Sacramento, Winters, and Woodland. One elected member from YOLO County, one elected member at large, one member, the formerly homeless person, and one member, which would be the HPAK president. So that way, you basically, everybody who is involved with homeless in YOLO County has a connection within each of the jurisdictions would be on this reformed commission.
So the YOLO Housing Authority Board, I'm only mentioning this because we were scheduled, we were originally intending to make a nomination for that board. The Board of Supervisors earlier this year adopted ordinance that restructures that board. Has been a board of appointees of the Board of Supervisors, from members of the public with specific professional backgrounds, and they adopted a ordinance change that provides for the board to be comprised of, I think, half that would be representatives of the Board of Supervisors and the cities, but with two key nuances, which is why we don't have it on tonight's agenda, and we're instead going to be discussing it at YOLO Mayor's meeting later this week, which is that it provides for three of the four cities at any one time to be on the board, following sort of the LAFCO model, although LAFCO is two of the four at any one time. So that's one aspect which is problematic. And the second is that the actual appointments would be made by the Board of Supervisors. So we could send a nomination, you know, we could nominate you to serve on that board, for example, but you would be serving at the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors, which compromises the ability of the city's representative to actually represent the city, if they can be removed at any moment by the Board of Supervisors. So those are, it's become of particular interest, it's already of interest to us, obviously, because the YOLO County Housing Authority operates housing within our community, but they are also designated in the redevelopment statutes to take on housing responsibilities. If we were to opt out on redevelopment, the Housing Authority is the default agency to succeed to some of those responsibilities, and so we obviously have an even stronger interest now in making sure that the lines of accountability to the city are closer than what that existing ordinance raises. So just for us to connect the dots with what may be happening at the county level, that there are some issues with the YCHA structure that we should pay attention to, if you're either going to be using that structure or mimicking it with respect to homelessness.
Maybe the city manager can maybe brief us as council communications on what the status of that process is, and to give you a little clearer picture. The main person that's involved with this is Lisa Baker, who's obviously apprised of what's going on with YOLO Housing, so.
Okay. Other reports or communications? Mayor Protem Kristoff.
Yeah, just to report, I know that some people had asked last meeting about South River Road and the Port area, and I just wanted to, I received part of my packet for tomorrow, and the bank project is, that's what we call it, and it is getting buttoned up now. The levee's been put back in place, and so it's all getting winterized, and the work will not be completed until fall of 2012. But the safety concerns, as far as having a low spot in that particular area, they've been addressed, and the construction company has put everything back in place. And so we will put up a fence, there still will not be any traffic on South River Road, but we'll put up a gate so that we can do our maintenance and flood protection and observation and things that we need to do. But at the same time, it'll be completed in 2012.
Other communications? The Delta Protection Commission is meeting on Thursday, and I cannot attend, and I'm pretty sure, given his wedding anniversary, that Mr. Ledesma cannot attend either.
Well, my wedding anniversary is tonight, so.
Oh, okay, so you're free.
That's all I'm afraid of. We'll talk offline.
It's in Stockton, so it would really ruin the entire anniversary. So we can talk offline, but I'm only noting it because if they're, it's a SECOG appointment, so the appointment of the alternate isn't done here, but if Mr. Ledesma cannot, is made unable to attend, if there's any other member of the council that would be willing to go to the meeting tomorrow evening, I think it's at 5:00 or 5:30 in Stockton. It is, it is an important policy meeting with respect to Delta issues, and Supervisor McGowan has emphasized that. I'm going to be at the YOLO Mayor's meeting, so I cannot be there, but if anyone, you don't need to let me know now, but if you just shoot me a note sometime tonight, or first thing in the morning, and if you follow up with your wife.
After my ten minutes.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Item 1C, we have no appointments to boards and commissions this evening, so item 2 is selection of the mayor pro tem. And so at this time, we'd like to open nominations for the office of mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Ledesma?
Yes, I'd like to nominate council member Biagis to be mayor pro tem.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, and seconded again? Okay. It was moved by.
I didn't get who seconded it.
Mr. Johansson. All right, so there's no further nominations. We don't need a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none, that motion carries. Congratulations. Big shoes to fill. Thanks, Bill. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda, which is items 3 through 15. We have one request for public comment on item 8. Are there other items on the consent agenda that any member of the council wishes to remove, or any item for separate question or comment? All right, item 8 is consideration of Resolution 11-86 approving the establishment of a health retirement arrangement pursuant to Internal Revenue Section 105H for retiree medical premiums. Marty Flatley.
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldon and members of the city council. Maybe I'm a little premature here, I don't know, but I just wanted to thank city staff, especially the city manager's office, Toby Ross, Mr. Wright, on behalf of myself and other retirees, the public sector side, or public safety side, I should say. Like I said, I know that no vote's been taken on this particular item yet, so I may be speaking prematurely, but I certainly wanted to thank all the members of the city council, and like I said already, the city manager's office, Mr. Phil Wright personally, and it's greatly appreciated. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Flatley. Yeah, there's never a bad time for that. All right, item 11 is consideration of authorization to exceed city manager's funding authority for material testing services with Wallace Cool &amp; Associates for the Bridge District Infrastructure Improvements Project. Mr. Kristoff.
Toby Wong, or Bill Panos? Toby? You're asking for us to increase and exceed the amount that can, that the city manager can sign for. What is that amount?
$50,000.
It was 50.
Yeah.
Okay, I saw the $50,000 figure here, and I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions and comments on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? It's been moved by Mayor Protem Biagis and seconded by Mr. Johansson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none, that motion carries. Item 16 is consideration of Resolution 85 authorizing the execution of a site lease, facilities lease, and other documents associated with the 2011 refunding lease obligations.
Mayor, members of the council, tonight's item deals with the management of existing debt in consideration of a refinancing opportunity that would result in significant savings to the city over the next 19 years. Tonight, we're going to be asking you to consider approval of Resolution 11E5, which would authorize actions that would reduce lease payments by refunding the existing 1997 revenue bonds at a lower rate. The actions requested are going to be related to authorization of execution of a site lease, a facilities lease, an escrow agreement, as well as other actions that would be necessary to refinance the existing lease obligations. Back in October, we provided the council with an informational report that detailed the favorable market conditions for refinancing these lease obligations, and at that time, we assembled a finance team, and led by Southwest Securities, an underwriter who's on our vendor pool. And what Southwest did is they solicited proposals from 14 banks and/or lending institutions, and they had eight responses. And out of the eight responses, our finance team selected Municipal Finance Corporation as having the most favorable terms that were submitted. So the proposal before us has basically the following benefits, and at this time, I just note that a memo was distributed to you, which you should have earlier today. I'm going to use that memo rather than the staff report, because after filing the staff report, we did have some numbers that changed for the better, so I'll be referring to that. But the issuance amount, the outstanding principal on the existing bonds is about 6.7 million. We have total savings, interest rate savings by refinancing that principal amount of 1.27 million over the next 19 years. When we discount that amount back to present time, net present value savings are a little over a million. So a little over $1 million savings is what we're looking at on the deal. And that net present value savings amounts to 14.26 percent. Our target in pursuing this was to get at least 5 percent savings. And these numbers are better than what we presented to you in October. In terms of the deal, the payoff is going to shorten the term by one year. That's facilitated by the fact that we had, with the bonds, we have a debt service reserve that makes the final year payment, so we're actually shortening the term to, from 2030 to 2029. Under the assumptions here, our cash flow savings are going to amount to, in year 2012, $133,000 approximately. And then over the next 19 years, savings will range from a highest $77,000 to a low $50,000 annually. So the numbers that we're looking at are based on interest rate that we don't believe will change. This deal's going to close quickly. It's going to close by the end of the year, so we're not subject to interest rate fluctuations or risk there. At this time, one of the outstanding issues we're looking at is lender approval, credit approval from our lender. Otherwise, all costs of issuance are contingent upon closing the transaction. Just real quickly, some of the mechanics of the deal that I point out, the deal structure is very similar to what exists now, where we have a site lease and facility lease. What's different is, instead of having the West Sacramento Financing Authority as the intermediary, there will be a nonprofit corporation that was set up by Municipal Finance Corporation as an intermediary for all their deals. And so Public Property Finance Corporation is actually the entity we're going to be executing our site lease and facilities lease with. And so, you know, that nonprofit will then assign lease payments to the lender. Now, the lender, the bank that we're talking to right now is City National Bank. They're a Los Angeles-based bank, and they would basically be receiving the lease payments over time. The intermediary I mentioned would assign the lease payments to the ultimate lender. We do have collateral in the deal, and this is kind of interesting. We discovered we couldn't use City Hall as collateral on this deal, even though we're financing the City Hall bonds, because the 2004 revenue bonds, Fire Station 41 and 45, have City Hall as their collateral. So we just went, okay, well, we'll use Fire Station 45 that has a value that satisfies our need to be the collateral for this refinancing. Again, you know, just there are some interesting parts of the deal since our October report to you. We've eliminated debt service reserve requirement. We've eliminated some issuance costs that are associated with the public financing by going with a private placement. We've eliminated some annual costs associated with just having outstanding bonds, which is about $5,000 a year. So that's why your numbers jumped up from a little over 10 percent to a little over 14 percent in terms of your savings. And again, we have our collateral issue that we've resolved. Anyway, the private placement's going to allow us to, quickly, to capture the current market, and that concludes staff presentation.
Mr. Johansson.
Paul, what is the discount rate you were using on the 1.2 million over 19 years to get to the net present value?
You know, this is where I'm going to have to, to give you the discount rate, I'm just going to have to ask my consultants who are in the audience here.
You could get one phone a friend, and that's it? So I hope you chose wisely.
Ken.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Ken Decker with Del Rio Advisors, I'm the financial advisor to the city. You asked what the discount rate was, that's assuming for the present value. We use what's called the arbitrage yield, and the arbitrage yield is that yield at which the city could invest the monies without paying any rebate to the federal government. So sort of your, so basically, in this case, it's a private placement. The lease rate is 3.73 percent, and that's also your arbitrage yield. So it's 3.73 percent.
Okay, great, thanks.
Other questions? Or discussion? It's a smart move. You know, the only issue I raised earlier when we first talked about this was, I didn't want to, except in extraordinary circumstances, be refinancing by extending the term and pushing our debt obligations onto the future, and this not only doesn't do that, but it's, you've shortened the term by a year, so you take direction, really, this is great. So I'm very, very pleased with what this action and the scope of review that's been done by our staff, both on this and a wide variety of other areas, to make sure that we're able to achieve savings on behalf of the taxpayers and the organization that we really need, so. All right, then, is there a motion? Mr. Penker?
I'll move the recommended action, along with the changes noted in today's memo.
It's been moved by Mr. Ledesma, and seconded by Mr. Kristoff. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none, motion carries. Item 17 is presentation and first reading of ordinance 12-01 in consideration of Resolution 11-89 to approve an amendment to the contract between the Board of Administration for the California Public Employees Retirement System and the city of West Sacramento. Mr. Wright.
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldon, members of the council. You may remember that I was here a little while back doing essentially the same thing with our police safety, which is, we have negotiated with bargain units representing miscellaneous employees, met with the groups that have miscellaneous employees to adopt a second tier, 2% at 60 for retirement formula. CalPERS requires that we have, we do a resolution of notice of intent to amend our contract, and we will come back with the ordinance actually amending the contract in January.
All right, are there questions for Mr. Wright?
Nope.
Any discussion? Mr. Johansson? Second.
I'll move for the recommended action.
And I'll second. All right, it's been moved by Mr. Johansson and seconded by Mr. Ledesma. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none, motion carries. Item 18 is presentation on draft Business Resource and Innovation Center study. Mr. Robson and Ms. Richards.
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldon and members of the city council. We're here tonight to receive your input on the Business Resource and Innovation Center draft study, and joining me tonight is Audrey Taylor with Chabin Concepts, our consultant team. As the council knows, it's well documented that businesses are more successful when they receive technical assistance and financial assistance and resources from a variety of providers, and over the past couple of years, this has been even more important than ever with the severe economic downturn. Staff has partnered frequently with our partners at the Chamber, the Small Business Development Center, local lenders, PG&E, and others, and many of these services, such as the Small Business Development Center, are located outside the city limits, requiring businesses to travel away, to get all the services that they need to survive and thrive. In the interest of this, staff proposed, and we received, a grant to study whether having a central location in the city of West Sacramento would be a better way of providing services and increasing access for our businesses to these vital services to help them survive and thrive. And the CDPG grant study allowed us to research the current economy, conduct interviews, business roundtables. business roundtables, and lender roundtables, and an online survey of a hundred, more than a hundred businesses in the city. In addition, we interviewed over thirty providers, including Small Business Development Center, the West Sacramento Chamber, SCORE, the Service Corporation of Retired Executives, Community College, and workforce development providers, including Yolo County here in town. Based on our business and provider input, we learned, we had a great number of insights. For one, about 79 percent of our community is small businesses that have less than five employees. We have about a thousand businesses of the 1,800 businesses that we have in the community that are small businesses. So we also learned that we had a number of very important growing business segments, including over the last ten years, over the last five years, 10 percent or more growth in the energy and manufacturing, industrial machinery, electronics, and professional and technical services. So some important business sectors are growing, and that was, that was very good information for us. In addition, we learned that business needs really vary, and that small businesses need much different services than middle market and major employers do, and that the innovative and emerging growth sectors, of which we do have some that are, that are very, that are high growth, and also have different needs and have a different provider network that they need. We also learned that the first source of their information is the internet. They actually go to the internet and see what's available, and then they reach out to a local provider. They prefer to receive services in person at their facility in general, and that most businesses were not aware of all the services that were available to them here in West Sacramento or beyond. For these reasons, a one-stop center is not indicated as the recommended approach at this time due to the varied business needs that businesses require, and also that our service providers, both Small Business Development Center, the Chamber, Community College System, their staff and financial resources are very constrained right now. We also explored facilities here in town, such as the Community College, Yolo County's one-stop center, to see if we could leverage other facilities and get providers, co-locate providers in some of those facilities. And those were not really available due to other uses that had been located there. Although a physical center isn't recommended at this time, the study did provide some very important key findings to improve business access right now, including delivering services more comprehensively through our online services, including the website as well as our e-newsletter. The study also suggests that we should direct resources to the businesses through market segments, such as small businesses, the middle market, and major employers, as well as the innovative and emerging growth companies. Another key finding is that we need to accelerate outreach to our existing middle market and major employers and develop strategic actions for the innovative segment. The study recommendations are presented in a building block format so that we can select and scale and phase implementation in as priorities change and/or are revealed, and also as resources allow. For example, Building Block A, Communications and Marketing, the city website, has a lot of opportunity there, redesigning our email news items to provide information about all the resources that are available, as well as contact information and scheduling, so they can actually schedule an appointment with a service provider, such as Small Business Development Center, right there online. This will allow staff to be more efficient with our own resources and to do more outreach, more concerted outreach to our middle market and major companies, and also to devote more time to the innovative segments. We also suggest that City Hall and community center space can be better utilized to have more business training and workshops in the city. And we also want to convene service provider meetings so we can actually get the latest information from our providers, have resources on the website of classes and workshops going on, all in the city as well as outside the city, so that this information is readily available 24/7 to the entire business community. Last night, we presented this report to the Economic Development Advisory Commission. They recommended that the city council consider the report, and they had several comments that I'd like to share with you now. They wanted to ensure that the resources reach small businesses early on, and as many of our providers and consultants have told us, a lot of times, businesses wait until it's a crisis to ask for help. And so having this 24/7 online resource be more comprehensive will allow them to get that, to be aware of those services much earlier on than where, until they wait until a crisis comes. They also suggested that we support actions to connect small businesses with our successful businesses, our larger businesses, our established businesses. And there's a number of ways that we do that. We already do a lot of that with the Chamber and some of our networking functions, but that's an important recommendation. One of the other comments was to include a section for providing services without city staff, should funding not be available in the future, possibly in the appendix, and that we should revise figures 21 and 22, or explain the other category because there were a number, a large number of businesses in the other category. That concludes my remarks. What we are requesting from the council this evening, this is a workshop, so we're requesting comments on the draft study, which we will incorporate and then return to the council in January with a report for your acceptance.
All right, if there's no objection, before we go to staff questions, this has been done in partnership with the Chamber, so I'd like to invite the CEO of the Chamber, Denise Seals, to make her comments on the item as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. The results from this study are exciting news for us. You know, we've been working in partnership with the city and the SBDC and Los Rios and Pacific Gas and Electric and everyone that will partner as we look at a reset economy for several years now. The data, the real data that's available to us as a result of the time invested in this is invaluable from the standpoint that it is accurate, it is current and fresh, and it relates specifically to West Sacramento. We're not trying to extract information from a broader regional look. The economic modeling software that the city is moving forward with is also a wonderful resource for us. What we know about small and micro businesses, not just in our community, but really nationwide, is that any more a home-based business is probably not the Avon lady or the Mary Kay lady. It's more than likely someone who is running a business, not in a brick-and-mortar setting, they probably have employees, and they're working through their home. They may not be building a building, they may not be moving into lease space, especially given what's happened with this economy. So we know that small business needs help when they need help, not when you need for them to need help. So it's probably not an eight-to-five proposition, it's probably definitely not a brick-and-mortar proposition, but it is making available to them through webinars, through networking opportunities, through specific targeted areas of focus to help them connect with the kinds of folks that'll move them into a successful business. We know that from the, it will be from the small business group, from the small and micro businesses, that's where today's entrepreneurs are. That's where the expansion will happen. We take good care of them at this phase in their business, and they will stay and have great success in our community. So thank you all. We, thank you staff for your hard work and partnership on this. It's really, it's real information, and that's always good information. And it's accurate information, which is really delightful. And now we can use this to continue to broaden our partnerships. So thank you very much.
All right, are there questions for Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Diane, I think on this, it does, I mean, it does a good job of doing what it's supposed to, to study the existing situation. And it looks like it's a fairly comprehensive view of what the, I guess you could sort of be performance deficits are on our ability to help these businesses. So the next step, which I don't think is addressed here, is how you do that, how you overcome those performance deficits, including the delivery of service being online or whatever. So I don't really see anything here in terms of, you know, specifically how this is going to be, how these situations are going to be remedied, and then what you're going to measure to make sure you're having an effect. And that's kind of what I'll look for as we start implementing something like this, because, you know, we do have a finite amount of staff, and I'm sure all of us want to know that what we're doing is actually having an impact, the intended impact. And then if we're going down a path that's not particularly working, that we have the ability to adjust to do that. For example, online, you know, a performance deficit could be that the data is available, but it's not available readily enough on the website, it's not in a usable format, you know, things like that, that, you know, you're going to continue to have to adjust. So then, is that, my understanding correct, is this really just a study at this point? The next step is going to be, when you finish this out, are you going to be identifying specific things that we can do that would then lead to implementation, or what's the next step?
The study sets forth ideas and actions that are suggested to be taken. We stop short of making more significant recommendations in light of the fact that we're awaiting some very important policy priorities as a result of the council's strategic planning sessions, as well as the redevelopment legislation. So the report is structured in a way that will allow us to pick and choose, and will allow us to take your direction to implement those ideas that are presented in the report. Having said that, there are some short-term actions that utilize existing resources that we will act on, such as the website, for example. As you pointed out, it does, you know, it can be improved, you know, fairly significantly in the near term to provide immediate access and knowledge of those resources to all the business segments. So we will, we will return back to you in January. We will also consider the strategic planning session and the redevelopment legislation to refine this plan. This is a plan and a guide, but as far as implementation, we will take further direction on that as, as time progresses into next year.
Okay, thanks.
I hope I answered that.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine for now.
Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks for the report and the briefing on the study. You know, I read through it, and it is very, a lot of comprehensive data, probably more than I've seen about exactly the composition of the businesses here. And so I appreciate you, a couple of things about the report and the data it presents in defining certain dynamics of the business community, in that your understanding of micro businesses to middle market businesses to larger corporations with each headquarters here in town or branches here in town. Because I think the tendency is in business, and we're all adjusting to this, is that small business is smaller than a large corporation, and then they have large corporations, and it's a one-size-fits-all sort of approach to how you either provide services to them or support them in other ways. So the fact that we've taken the step of kind of gathering actual data and then the composition of our businesses here is a really good step, I think. And so I applaud the effort. It's, there's a really a lot of good data here to just understand what we're dealing with in our community. And secondly, was around, that I wanted to get to, was the process you went through to kind of gather the data, and then there's a couple, I do have a couple of issues that kind of have, is going where my colleague, Mr. Johansson, was going in terms of what the next steps are. I had a little hard time understanding kind of what, where we go from here. And you, in the report, you do acknowledge that economic development, we all know this, is economic development is facing some uncertain futures in terms of funding, but we still have an obligation to sort of address it. So, but I appreciate the process you went through to kind of get a lot of different feedback. And the, I guess, the part of the feedback that I would ask for, which, my feedback to this process, is that you went and gathered a lot of information from stakeholders and businesses. And I think EDAC kind of caught on to this in your comments, in that how do you connect businesses to, or newer businesses or businesses in trouble with businesses that are doing well, to learn, to mentor, or whatever the case? Because I think that is an important part, and working for a large organization, I was actually at a small business summit last week where this exact issue came up, is this kind of, can there be some of that facilitation of peer mentor? And so I think that's a good one. But I would also say that you got a lot of feedback from stakeholders who work with small businesses, and if there was a way to institutionalize or bring them in. I know like folks like PG&E, some of the local banks, they're already out there helping you, but if there's a way to sort of, and kind of urge them and institutionalize that to go forward with sort of the, going forward, next steps, implementation steps, to keep them involved, I think that would be a very good thing that I'd like to see going forward. I would like to see, you know, I think the building block approach is fine. What I would like to see is kind of some of the definition of what actions might go within there. I get the basic concepts in that if we see, you know, I'm looking past the communication market, which seems to be the low-hanging fruit, but you have these other approaches and or blocks, as you're calling them, to address micro enterprises and up the scale. What would they need? I don't, I didn't get a firm understanding of what kind of services or what kind of support they might need. And I'm not saying you have to have the answers, but certainly, again, you can turn back to the stakeholders or whatever else to sort of build that in. I think that would be important because I think what your study pointed out was that they all have varying needs, and they all have a very, there's a value on what they're bringing to the community by way of property taxes or by sales taxes or whatever else. So there's probably some prioritization in terms of how much emphasis we need to give it at any given time. So again, that's, that's another area that I'd like to sort of look at. I had another point, I'm sorry, I'm looking back at my notes. I think that's it for now, but I think, you know, I just want to, again, I think this is a great study, it's a great first step, a great information to have in general for us going forward. I know that we have a lot of work to do on the funding, but I would urge you, you know, not to wait as much as you can. I understand you want to get to the website, and there's some things you can do, but that doesn't prohibit us from sort of thinking about steps we can take, and when the funding's there or not, or the direction that we might have, certainly we'll add to that. But again, if there's strategies or action plans or implementation planning we can do in the interim, the better, because things are not getting better, maybe slowly, but you know, 2012 will be another year of work to kind of build it up. So the sooner we can sort of get forward on it, the better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Captain Viegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would echo my colleagues' comments, it's a great report, a lot of good data, very informative. I did have a question, though, I was trying to find out, I didn't see it in here, maybe I missed it, or you could point out. In your, in your findings or in your work, did you, I mean, obviously, the question that we're asking a lot of folks is what, you know, what does it take to expand your business, or, you know, what's the next step you plan to take, or what's the likelihood you're going to hire more people because everybody's trying to figure out what that, how do you incentivize that? Did you, I know we've asked this question before, did you hear at all within different sectors of what folks are waiting for, other than the obvious, which is they're waiting for everybody else to get going before they jump in, before they start hiring more people or expanding their businesses? Was there any, anything that was crystallized as a result of the work that you could point to? And if not, that's fine, I mean, I know that the work has been.
I would say a couple of things. First, that we, as a result of this outreach to all these businesses, we have, we have an action list of businesses we need to call on that have specifically identified things that they would like to do, such as import and export, such as hiring and training funds. Some businesses are ready to expand and need technical building permit and licensing assistance. So we do have a list of businesses to call on, and that's a focus of our business retention efforts. As far as sectors, we didn't glean as much of that as to, you know, which sectors, you know, obviously, they're identified, which ones are growing, and I think that's going to be helping, help us determine what our priorities are in actually doing the outreach to our existing businesses. For example, biomedical, you know, that's definitely growth there, as well as the manufacturing sector. That's, you know, in terms of facilities and investments in the community and hiring.
That's good, that would be good. I know the, Mr. Johansson's question earlier about what the next steps are going to be predicated in large, large part based on the strategic plan that'll occur at the beginning of next year, but I think to the extent that it's available, if you can synthesize some of that as sort of information available to us to discuss, so that we can, you know, place an asterisk on that, on that sector, or are there, if you're seeing things that we ought to take advantage of, whether they be in manufacturing or high-tech or whatever the industry might be. industry might be, would be helpful, to the extent that it's available. I also wanted to just point out that the report also indicates, and it was good to see, that despite the fact that we've had to cut back our hours and the days of service for the business counters, that folks are still pretty happy with the service despite, you know, not having us available as much as we once were, and that's always a good thing. So, that was nice to see as part of the report, that folks are still happy about the service they're getting from the counter. So, that's good, that's great, thank you.
All right. So, this is a workshop only. I agree with all the comments that my colleagues have made, and certainly the ones that EDAC has outlined as well. I think developing some performance metrics to guide our activities in the future, now that we have a solid foundation of data, is important. It's easy in this kind of a field to just go after eight million different activities, whichever looks the easiest, and we do need a way to, given our severely limited resources, both our own and our partners and the businesses that are engaged, to make sure that we are, that the select few activities that we do undertake as part of this building block effort are the highest payoff ones as we proceed, but I think all the key points have been made. So, all right, thanks very much, and thanks to our partners.
Thank you.
Brings us then to item nineteen, which is an AB 109 update and request for approval to enter into a funding agreement. Chief Drummond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. When I was last here, you expressed some interest in receiving some updates on the AB 109 progress. So, we're back after two months to give you kind of an operational update, a few highlights, and then just answer any questions you have about the funding that's available should the city decide to accept that funding. Operationally, we reorganized inside the department, and our community response team has been reconfigured, and we now have one sergeant and two police officers who form a compliance team, an AB 109 compliance team, and they are working with the probation department, who has opened up shop in the county center across Triangle Court from us. And so, we are having regular daily contact and interaction with probation department and begin monitoring our post-release community supervision, people that are in our community. So, that's how we're progressing right now. Some quick snapshots of statistics, information that we've had so far. Thirty-eight people have been released to West Sacramento on the post-release community supervision program. Thirty-five have reported as they should have, three did not, and warrants have been issued for those three, and recently made an arrest of one of those in the month of December, early December, on one of those three. That was a no-show. Of the thirty-eight total, we so far have, in the months of October, November, only rearrested one person of that thirty-eight, essentially on drug charges. Unfortunately, that one person was rearrested twice on drug charges, so there's obviously an issue there, and hopefully their programming and treatment aspects of the program will address that issue. But that's, we were pleased with that at this point, that only one rearrest at this And we have had so far twenty-three contacts or searches of the PRCS individuals, and that's independent of our work with the probation department. So, that at least gives you a quick snapshot of what's happening in the field and how we're addressing the issue. The other issue before you tonight is the amount of money that was part of the negotiated, the negotiated amount in the AB 109 funds, and that was a $300,000 total share for nine months for the four police departments in the county, and our share of that divided the three major departments of $97,500. And what that money would be go toward is offsetting the costs that were already occurring of our sergeant and two officers that are addressing this issue. So, it's a partial offset of that. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, Chief, just a quick question on this, the three that didn't show. Are you, you're obviously talking to your peers in this throughout the state on how this is going. Is it, I mean, it doesn't make sense to me why someone wouldn't show up, but I guess that's why they're criminals. But, you know, in terms of the, maybe a way for that not to happen, or is there something, I mean, it's probably a little early right now to see why these people didn't show, and maybe some other jurisdictions are, there's some processing or something like that, or is it just, you know, kind of a wait-and-see on what's going on with that?
No, in talking with the probation department, that is an issue that we're concerned about, is at least getting people off on the right foot and meeting with them. And so, probation department has actually taken the lead there and has contacted the other counties to check on their rates. So, I don't know if we can extrapolate that in the long run to say, you know, three of thirty-eight is going to be, you know, the rate, that's slightly less than 10%. We hope it won't be that high, but we are looking at that.
Okay, thanks. Herr President, Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Chief. This is exactly what I was hoping for, is to kind of get some understanding of kind of how it's proceeding and what the numbers look like. And I would just share with you that I know, you know, that the first round of funds came pretty quick, sort of hastily put together, but the formula that they used to disperse the funds to the counties was kind of a one-time formula. The formula from July 1 of next year is currently being negotiated, and I would just share with you that I think it's important that we pay close attention to what those negotiations look like, because I suspect that a lot of the counties who projected numbers to be at one number are finding that they're getting more than their fair share, and I'm concerned that some of those larger Southern California counties who are now finding that the numbers are much more than they originally thought are probably at the seat, with a lot of seats at the table, discussing what that formula might look like. And I know that we get $97,000 today for nine months, but we may get less than that for 12 months if we're not careful about what that formula looks like. So, I just, I bring that up just as information that I am aware of, that I know that we need to be careful or mindful of as we go down this path. Can you, so the thirty-eight that were released since October 1, what percentage of that, or do you have any sense of what percent of that is? That's, those are West SAC numbers. Is that a significant percentage of the countywide, or is it a half? Or what, do you have any sense of what that is?
I don't have the total county numbers. I will tell you that that's significantly higher than what we expected.
Yeah.
Based on some projection provided by CDCNR, we probably expected half that number. So, something is not quite right, and we're trying to, we're trying to look at that issue. We don't know if that's going to be the continuing trend. The numbers for, that would be approximately nineteen a month, and we were probably expecting, you know, half that number, as I said. We've looked at the numbers for December, they've given us a projection of what they expect to be released back to West Sacramento, and it is lower for December. It's around 12, but that number is still higher. That will put us at 50 for three months, which is significantly ahead of the projection.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was concerned about, which is why I'm glad you're here. So, then in terms of the profile of the thirty-eight, is it what you projected in terms of what the profile of the released individuals would have been, or is it different?
I have not seen the profiles on the thirty-eight, so I can't speak directly to that, but I'd be happy to provide that to you here in the next few days to give you a snapshot of what that looks like.
Yeah, it would be good so that we're tracking it, because again, these are the kind of the indicators, at least for me, I'm going to be very interested in, and so I want to make sure that if we're expecting to get, you know, cat burglars, and we're getting, you know, folks that, let's be honest, I mean, they're calling them non-non-nons, but we all know that's not going to always be the case. So, I just, I want to make sure that the profile of the folks that are being released, certainly to this community, that we know exactly what that looks like.
Yeah, I understand. I'll get you some information this week.
All right. I wanted to take this opportunity to also recognize and thank the chief and the police department for a very quick action the last couple, two days ago, I think it was, with that Amber Alert that surfaced. I know the police department was very quick to respond to a potentially very serious situation with an abduction. I know, I saw the alert on the freeways, I was getting on at the freeway, and within a couple hours, I think I got the notification that they had managed to apprehend the suspect somewhere outside the county, so that's good work, so, great. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll pass it on to patrol and detectives, thank you.
Yeah, that was, that was great, great work. Thank you.
Fred.
Yeah, yeah, Chief, yeah, I'm glad that we've had this report, because I was really concerned about the number of folks that are going to be released back into our jurisdiction. And when you said thirty-eight, I was really sort of stunned. I mean, I went, wait a minute, you know, there weren't that, I didn't think that there were that many arrests that would come, and it seems like we're getting a portion of somebody else's criminals. And I'd really like to make sure you stay on top of that and look into that, because even the December figure of 12, 50 in three months seems high, because, I mean, if you start putting that out over a year's time, that's a substantial population. And, you know, I think that Sacramento, or I think the city of West Sacramento has been targeted historically for the release of parolees into our area that really do not belong here. And I know that we've had this conversation, and I've had this conversation with other police chiefs, and I'd like to see if there is something that we can really do about that, because it's totally unfair.
We will research that and get back to you on that, too, what we discovered, why the number's higher than what the projection was.
Yeah, because I would like to continue these two months, or whatever it is, kinds of discussions, so that we can just stay on top of this. And then if there's something we need to do politically, then, you know, that's up to us to go out and, you know, raise the issue or whatever, and I'm sure it'll probably fall on deaf ears, but at the same time, at least we feel good raising the issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. That brings us to item 20, which is presentation of the 2012 federal legislative program. Mr. Panos.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. The city manager, Toby Ross, asked me to make a brief presentation, I'm going to ask Mr. Rankin to see if he can pull it up, a brief presentation that supplements the agenda report that you have with regards to our government affairs program and the accomplishments from 2007 until today. And so, I just got a couple of slides to go through, it won't take very long, and then we can take comments from you about the agenda report or the presentation or our government affairs program in general. So, the government affairs program has been going on for quite some time, and it is a partnership between, obviously, the city council and the council members and the city staff and the agencies and the elected officials that we have, both here in the state of California and back in Washington, D.C. There are really three primary goals from our perspective. The first is to improve our functional relationships back in Washington, D.C. And over the last few years, we have really developed what I call comprehensive relationships with the delegation and the staff of our elected officials. We have built upon the relationships that the council, the mayor and the council have been able to build and gone beyond in most recent years to include things like the chiefs of staff of these elected officials and particular staff that relate to our particular interests, like the port and flood control and some of the others, to really give a relationship with those offices, a really comprehensive relationship with those offices, that helps us a great deal as our issues become relevant to those offices, and they, and we ask them for support, and they provide that support. And so, it's been, again, an enhancement, I think, of those relationships over the years, and it's been very beneficial to us. We are very solid with our delegation at these levels, the elected level, the chief of staff level, the staffers' level, and as they change. We have great transitioning from staff to staff person, and we found that to be the case with all of our elected officials. Oh, and I should add, with their offices back here in California as well. So, it's not just the staff in D.C., but it's the offices back here in California, and so those have been improved, I think, significantly over the period of, from 2007 to present, which is really the period that we're discussing today, the most recent period with Holland and Knight and our sort of modern, most recent government affairs program. We've also developed beneficial relationships with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, FEMA, OMB, and congressional staff. Again, an enhancement of existing relationships with the mayor and the staff and the city council, and our, or I should say, our port commission as well, and our commission members, and our commission chair, Supervisor McCowen. Again, an enhancement with these agencies and congressional staff, again, not just in Washington, or I shouldn't say, not just the regional offices here in San Francisco or in Sacramento, but the headquarters offices and the appropriate staff back in Washington, D.C. Appropriate being those staff which have an effect over appropriations and policy that is of interest to the city and to the port. Those have been very, I think, very effective over the last few years, and again, enhanced in the period of time that we're talking about. The last area I wanted to talk about in terms of improving functional relationships is really enhanced visitation and really an understanding of the city and port of West Sacramento. We like to share a story where a few years back, we would go to D.C. and we would meet with staff, congressional staff, either on a cap-to-cap trip or on one of our lobbying trips, and they would suggest that, they would not know that the city of West Sacramento was actually a city, they would think it was a suburb of Sacramento. Today, they know us, they know who we are, they know what our city is all about, they know what we've accomplished, they know what we have as challenges moving forward, they know about the port, and they know about the importance of the port. We have a very, they have a very clear understanding of our community and our port, and many of the reports that we hear from these council meetings reflect that, especially after trips back to Washington, D.C. Can we go to the next slide? The second goal really is securing funding and authorizations and appropriations. And what I did here was I talked with the lobbying group back in D.C., and we actually filtered out everything but those things which they had direct influence over. So, we may have applied for a grant, but we did it through staff, or we did it through mayor and city council, and the lobbyists never really had a part in it. These are the ones that they did have a part in. And so, for this period of time, we have about $31 million in direct federal funding, additional authorizations of about $53 million. This includes both the port and the city. Directly related state funding, about $173 million. Much of state funding and state, not just proposition money, but other monies require federal match, and so getting that state money, or getting the federal money is really critical to us getting state money. And our current federal request is about five million. It splits, not quite equally, but generally between the port and the city of West Sacramento. Our future federal requests are large. They include both primarily the channel deepening and flood control, and the reason I put that there is, one, to show the scale of what we are going to have to be asking for as we move forward, but also to, you know, to indicate it's both from, it's primarily for flood control and the port, channel deepening project, and there are others. So, this does not include things like grants that we are going to pursue, other grants that we're going to pursue as we go forward. This really is the requests that we see coming that are connected to the requests that we've already received. Let me move on to the third slide. The third thing that the government affairs program does back in D.C. is it really assists in the alignment of federal priorities. And I have pulled up five that we were able to, we didn't want to put all of them here, we wanted just to give you a summary of just a few selected ones. This, the first one was actually right, I think, right before I came, was this idea, I think we were redoing the Tower Bridge, we were expanding the pedestrian improvements on the Tower Bridge, both the bicycle and the pedestrian improvements, and there was some involvement of a state agency there and an equivalent federal agency, and by Holland and I engaging, or by our lobbyists engaging the federal agency, we were able to move something through that wasn't able to be moved through. I don't know the complete story here, but I know you do, and certainly I can get you more information about it, but that was one. The second is the reconsideration of the executive order limiting federal investments. This was a primary, the mayor did a great job back in D.C. with the White House and the administration, and the lobbyists helped us a great deal in identifying that this was a problem, this executive order was a problem, and now it's being reconsidered. It was, it was going to be sort of dusted off and then implemented, and it would have had a significant effect, not only on our community, but communities around the country, those communities that are historically located on waterways or rivers or oceans or anything where our, you know, historically, our cities and our urban areas. or anything where our, where our, you know, historically our cities and our urban areas have been developed, and this would significantly change the way federal investment is made, including things like flood protection and, and, and ports and other things. The third is reconstruction of the FEMA flood zone policy, designation policies. We've talked about that here before. There's current legislation, there's legislation that's being proposed both in the House and the Senate now, that looks at flood zone designation changes, and many of those changes came from this region and came from this community. And so we're really proud of the fact that we were able to identify for FEMA headquarters and for Congress via our lobbyists, the, the ideas that certain flood zone designation policies may have an impact, a negative impact, a detrimental impact on flood control projects, and in our community it would have. The fourth that I have here is prioritizing connecting various federal investments in the port. This relates to something that happened a, a year or so ago, where we had money coming from the Department of Transportation into the port for our marine highway program, our, our new barge service, and then we had some monies being moved out from the US Army Corps of Engineers for, for, that were designated for channel deepening, and it was this, this lack of coordination between the two agencies that the lobbyists, along with the, the mayor and the city council and the port commission, were able to go back to Washington DC and make the point to these two large federal agencies and the White House, that it's probably better to have coordinated federal funding than federal funding that was going one direction with one agency and another direction with another. The last that I mentioned here is a national coalition on revising flood control project crediting. This is at the heart of, it's the, what we call the 104 issues. It's at the heart of, of our flood program, and it is related to changes in federal policy that, on crediting of our flood control projects. And so we've now formed a national coalition, we've been able to, to really curtail, or I should say, suspend a decision that was going to be made back in fall by the, the Assistant Secretary of the Army, that would have been detrimental to our program. Would still be detrimental if we don't get that changed, but we're in the middle of the process of doing it. Again, a coordinated effort between the, the, the mayor, the city council, the staff, and our lobbyists back in DC. So this is an example of how lobbying, lobbying in Washington DC helps align federal priorities to benefit the city of West Sacramento and the port of West Sacramento. And that's really all I had. I wanted to give you a, a brief, sort of, just a summary of some of the accomplishments to sort of complement the, the agenda report that you have, and then I can take any comments or any questions about the agenda report and that, which is proposed there, and, and the city manager, Toby Ross, is also here for, to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there questions? Mayor Portman-Viegas?
No questions, just a comment, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Panos, just wanted to say thanks for the work. It's, it is, it's, it's extremely complicated work that, that goes into the plan. I know there's a lot of agencies, a lot of bureaucracies, a lot of starts and stops, a lot of hurry-up-and-waiting that is required, and to coordinate it and to find ways to sort of herd the cats, and then sort of find ways to keep this, this thing moving on so many fronts is, is difficult. The figure, the three hundred and fifty million, the federal, that's over, what, a twenty-year period or projected out, and what's the?
It really depends how long the projects take, in combination with how much money is available. After we get authorization, you get appropriations, and how much the federal government is going to be willing or able to provide us every year, so it'll be dependent on those two factors.
Okay, so the total sum is three fifty, we just had projected out, the flood work would be over a twenty-year period, potentially, so.
Potentially.
Yeah, all right, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thanks, yeah, Bill, thanks a lot for, for bringing this forward. I know we talked about this, I think it was probably after the last cap-to-cap, and we've got one coming up. And there's always, you know, I know it's a concern with all of us here on, on, you know, the necessity of trips back to Washington and whether they're productive or not, but it really does look like with the team that we have, both here, with you and the staff, and our lobbyists here in Sacramento and lobbyists in Washington, that it really does pay off. And, but for those trips, but for those personal contacts, we wouldn't see nearly this level of funding that we're receiving to, to West Sacramento. So, we're so conscious about, you know, trips to Washington, and I know we're very frugal about that, but, you know, I feel it's absolutely essential, because we, we just won't, we're too small unless we're out there. So, but I, I'm glad you, you're able to get this information together, it kind of really puts it in black and white, the value of that work.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I echo my colleagues' comments on, on providing this information, overview of what we accomplished and, and kind of where the efforts have been focused. I, I think this is, you know, and, and I've been to cap-to-cap a few times, but last year, my first time as a council member, and it was really eye-opening to know that the path was laid, they knew our story, and, and not just that, but the credibility that the, that we had in the room with, with folks from the Army Corps, from wherever we were. That, the part where these investments pay off. I, I think, you know, we're looking at all expenses and, and, you know, continually in our, in our city, but we have to look at them with the, with the lens of, that's providing us the investment, what's providing back to the city, and this has just paid off recently, as you illustrated in your, in your presentation. And, and, and most importantly, it's, this is basic stuff we're getting, this is our future of West SAC to the port, to flood control. This is the bare necessities, and, and, and I can't emphasize that enough to our community about how important this work is, and that it's, it's not frugal by any means. It is absolutely, or I shouldn't say frivolous, it's, this is essential stuff for our community, for its safety from flood control, and for further economic development through the port, and whatever else our priorities are. And, you know, I have to comment on that, too, in that, you know, it's, it's our staff working with our, our lobbyists. It's, it, not just herding cats on the hill, but all ourselves, and I, and I appreciate the fact how we're, that, that the city staff has been so singularly focused on these, these items. And that's, that's a good thing, because it's the same people know us, and the same people know what we're trying to get after, and they veer off, but it seems that things I've witnessed over the past year, we have several of us trying to address, either the mayor, I see him out quite a bit, you, our city manager, whomever, we're all telling the same story, and that's hard enough, and we're trying to do it, so we're very coalesced on our message. So, thank you, and this is a, a very good investment for us, so thank you.
Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, very briefly, Bill, yeah, thanks a lot for the report, and you do a good job, and I, I think that the city of West Sacramento really gets more bang for its buck when we, we sort of go it alone, when we go back to, we'll say, Washington DC and, we'll say, February. I think what happens when you go on cap-to-cap, you sort of get lost on it. You have to realize that cap-to-cap is, is really Sacramento City and Sacramento County agenda, and certainly they like to include all of us because of the, the size that it, it makes for everything, and, but I mean, I think that the real groundwork gets laid when we go back in January, February, whatever it is. And also, it's more in line with the appropriation process back in Washington DC. If they have more time to do that, like I guess they go back cap-to-cap in April, May, something like that, well, guess what? They've already made the appropriations, or just getting ready to. They don't want to change all those reports and do all that stuff. So if we go early, then I think we have an opportunity to do a little better, and we get a little more one-on-one, and the folks back there really, I think, appreciate and remember that a little bit more.
I, I agree, I think they, we have to go to all of them, actually. The, I mean, the, we have, I mean, it used, life used to be pretty simple, you know, everything was earmarked, you would go for the appropriations session, you'd call your congressman, Vicfazio would get us a bridge, Mike Thompson would get us a senior center, whatever it was, and that was the end. And now the, that process is almost incidental. I mean, in the end, by the time we get through the whole flood control piece, the appropriation's not going to be easy, but, you know, if we get through the GRR and all the work with the Corps, just on that process, I mean, that, that's where, there's so much more action in the halls of, of the Corps of Engineers. If we are able to get the streetcar project delivered and the bridge across the river, those are, we're gonna, it will be our work with DOT and FTA as much, if not more, than the folks on the Hill, on FEMA, you know, the land, that FEMA stuff is, you know, Congress, members of Congress have been helpful, but, you know, we have to deal directly with FEMA and on the executive order with the White House. So, you know, we definitely have a broad-range game on federal work, and if you're going to live in a community that is completely surrounded by levees, that has an inland port, and that needs to get connected through, with transit and transportation to the rest of the region, there's no, there's no alternative. So the point that Mr. Johansson raises is about, you know, we're careful about making sure we don't spend too much money on going back to Washington. It's essential for our, our critical priorities, and it's, I mean, having gone there enough to, you know, to be at United Airlines' highest level of status, it's no fun. I mean, there's not, there's no, there is no, none of us enjoy going there any longer. I mean, you can only see the monuments so many times, but it really is essential for us to get this work done, and it has paid off both in the money and in the regulatory side. And in, on the regulatory side, I think, in some respects even more importantly, because we're, we are so small, but if you go back there and you, you talk to folks in the White House or in the Corps or in FEMA, we loom large. I mean, there's, you know, some sense that, you know, there, you know, West, it's like, there's like West SAC in Atlanta and Dallas, you know, cities of that scale, and people there, if they, if they ever found out how tiny we really were, we might not get that much attention. But I think, I, I think it is, we've got, we've got a good staff team, good consulting team, our elected officials, both here and with Mike McCowen and others, have been really helpful. We've got great members of Congress as well. I sat down with Congresswoman Matsui for breakfast, an introductory breakfast about West SAC last month, and, you know, she, she came with her pad, waiting for me to tell her about the pool that we would like appropriation for, or, you know, you know, all the little things that most members of Congress are doing, and I told her, you know, our, you won't get many requests from us, but the ones that you get are going to be mammoth, right? We, all we want is like three or four things. We want basic investment in the port, so it can stay viable, we'd need a half a billion dollars with the levees, and we need to connect ourselves with, with transit and, and bridges to the, to the rest of the, to the region and within our community. That's it, that's all we need, just three things. And, and that's what we're delivering on. So I think it's a good report. Embedded in the written report is an update on the status of the contract and how the city manager and Bill have been dealing with the issue of a transition of our, the actual individual that has been handling a good chunk of our lobbying portfolio, as she makes a, a professional transition, and our, our staff, the city manager's office has done a good job of, and, and, Mr. Panos, of figuring out how to make that work in a way that preserves value for us, extends value for us, as that transition's occurred, and it's outlined in the staff report. It doesn't require our action, but I think, I appreciate that you've let the, kept us and, kept the council fully abreast of how that's proceeding as well. All right, any other comments on item twenty? All right, then, thank you. Council calendar, Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, next week, December fourteenth, we do not have any regular agenda items for the meeting, so if the council wishes to cancel or modify this meeting that is at your discretion.
All right, so I, I think our, we would intend to have a, a closed-session-only meeting then for, for December fourteenth?
Okay, then we'll go ahead and we'll schedule that.
Unless, unless between now and Friday afternoon, you know, other, other open-session items are, are required.
Okay. And I just wanted to remind the council that this Saturday at eight-thirty AM is breakfast with Santa, and the city hall will be closed for this annual holiday closure from December twenty-seventh and reopening on January third. So we'll be, be starting the public notification process on that.
All right, any questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Couple items. I think the council will recall that we spent a good deal of time on trees and lift stations in the southern part of the Bridge District a while ago. We have now opened that lift station, and it is functioning and serving that part of the area, which principally at this point is Israeli field, and the old system of a bladder has been abandoned, and now we have a fully operational lift station at that point. It has, it has the capacity to sort of empty that bladder in ten minutes, and we're, we're out of there. It's a, it's a, built for dramatically more capacity than we need today, but it's built for the capacity of the Bridge District, and so it's in great, great function. Just a, a bit of an update or, or clarification, we, we are prepared to put on the agenda on the issue of the housing authority as soon as that question is resolved as to what the membership will be and the functioning will be, and I, I think that the mayors are poised to kind of resolve that issue. I think that the county board is on the right track in sort of getting that out of their hands directly and into a body that focuses on it, and I think just some tweaking will, will solve the problem.
All right, any questions on city manager report? City attorney report? Staff direction for members of the council? We have no future agenda items? Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mayor Portman-Viegas, second by Mr. Johansson. All those in favor please say aye. Aye, and opposed, here it goes, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.